April 2014 Meeting of the Arundicoid Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we get underway, if everyone would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A few housekeeping matters to take up before we get underway. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south doors to leave the building. Our secretary, Michelle, is taking minutes of the meeting, not as a transcript, but for purposes of record of what takes place. So each time that anyone comes to the microphone, we would ask you to identify yourself and speak into the microphone. We will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table next to the door into the room. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come to the podium, identify themselves, state their address, then they will be sworn, and then they will present their case. During the presentation, members of the board may ask questions or engage in discussion with the applicant to clarify any questions that arise. Once that's completed, the case will be open to public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application should come to the podium, identify themselves, and state their address, and then direct their questions and comments to the board. We take public comment in three categories. First, we'll ask those who wish to speak in favor of the application to come to the podium. Then we'll ask those who wish to speak in opposition to the application to come to the podium. And then we'll take our third, recently added category for those who wish to speak but aren't sure if they're in favor or opposed, or just wish to speak and take no position with respect to the application. Once all the public input has been completed, the applicant or their representative will be given an opportunity to respond to anything that came up during the public input portion, and once that's completed, we will then close the hearing. After the cases on the agenda have been concluded, the board will take a short recess, and then we will return to deliberate and discuss any questions that we have. We would take them up in the order in which the applicants are still present. Once we've completed all the applicants who are present, then we'll start at the top of the agenda and work our way through in the order that the cases appear on the agenda. No further input is allowed during the deliberation portion, but you're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberation. If you wish to leave and you get home in time, you can watch us on Channel 12, or you can find out the results by calling the Planning and Zoning Board tomorrow morning after 9:00 a.m. Before we call our first case, I'd like to welcome Jason Denette as our newest member of the board, and he will be with us, I believe, until December of 2021, I think it would be. So we'll look forward to having you with us. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
We have a lengthy agenda tonight, I understand.
Yes, sir. First item is case number ZB 1404-1. Upon the matter of request by St. Josephat Ukrainian Catholic Church for a use variance to lease a portion of its school facility for the operation of a daycare center on premises 908 East Ridge Road, school building address is 95 Stanton Lane in an R1 residential district.
My name is George Hanischewski, 77 Ontario View Street, Rochester, New York, 14617. And if you need to zip, four, it's 1632. I'm representing St. Josephat's as...
Mr. Hanischewski, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
In order not to repeat as so eloquently was put, we're here for zoning variance to allow an operation of a for-profit daycare center at 95 Stanton Lane in a school building that's been vacant. That is our property.
I should note that you've provided us with a sheet that indicates that you have discussed this application with residents of Stanton Lane, Stan Ridge Court, Kalina Drive, and that you indicate that on here that no, none of the neighbors adjoining the property have any, have expressed any opposition to the application. There were several that didn't answer the door when you called, and one is for sale, but the others all indicated that they had no reservations. So that will become a part of the record pertaining to this case.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question on the financial information you submitted.
Yes.
I see that over three years, we went from being in the black to well in the red. But the one thing I don't see in the documents, and maybe I missed it, is what's the financial advantage going to be to the church to lease this property out?
Actually, it's going to help cover utilities for the facility at 95 Stanton Lane and do renovations to keep it up to date and in good order, and a plus for the town as, how should we say, a premium property.
I understand that you may not want to disclose the amount of the rent that you're going to be receiving, but would it satisfy the deficit that's reflected there for 2013?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions from any members of the board?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Prior to this year, you did have schools leasing the building, that's correct?
Yes, we did.
And at that time, it was financially feasible? You were getting a reasonable return on the property then?
The rent that was charged did not change over a six-year period. It was an issue that the tenant did not want to sign a contract, even at whatever the starting rate was.
And we had this same sort of application in front of us last year, I think from the same operator.
It is.
At a different church. And what I just wanted to make clear was the need for the variance is because this is a for-profit provider as opposed to a not-for-profit provider, correct?
Correct.
And what alternatives has the church pursued to renting the property to a for-profit operator?
We had it listed. Basically, what happened was there were a couple of interests, but they wanted the whole facility, and that would prevent us from carrying on our religious programs, et cetera. We would have been locked out of the building.
And we lost the kitchen.
And that was not acceptable to us. Correct. We lost the kitchen, the cafeteria, or what we call one of our halls, in the main hall, and also three rooms where we conduct religious education for our Persians' children.
My question is, you clearly state this is for profit, right?
Correct.
My question is, when you are a church, or any nonprofit organization, when you make a profit legally, what is the responsibility as far as the owner with regard to property tax?
We are well-prepared to pay the property tax. I think that we've talked with Enza downstairs, and she is working on it and assessing the value of the property, and we will get a tax bill for the portion that we are leasing. And we will gladly pay the town of Arundicoid, the county, and the state, whatever they deem necessary.
Well, that answered my question.
It's going back in the tax rolls a little bit.
That's right. Any other questions? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application?
She's got a vested interest.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Kristen Belkafini, residence at 2689 St. Paul Boulevard. I am the owner of Close to Home Childcare, was looking into leasing the space at St. Josephat's. Do I need to swear in or anything?
Nope. You're not the applicant, so...
I know that you've had a similar application within the past year in front of you for a different space in Arundicoid from us. A lot happened in that year. We are currently residing in Rubino's Plaza with our daycare that services 57 children. Last year, we are looking to expand and include a school age program to take, help ease parents in the West Arundicoid District who have half-day kindergarten care issues, being a unique situation where parents need daycare for the other half of the day, as well as wraparound care, which isn't offered through the school district. And we were looking to split our program between two different buildings. Unfortunately, well, fortunately for the children in the district, the district looking to full-day kindergarten during the 2015-16 year, it would kind of make that first move that we are looking into kind of irrelevant to go through an expansion, go through renovations at the other location, and to have it go for one year and then have to close down that operation and leave the building and leave our business in an expense as we are still growing and going through expenses from our first move from our home to the Rubino's Plaza. When St. Josephat's placed their for-lease sign, we were very excited to see that because 29 of our parents at our current center, who are all educators, either gave birth or are expecting a second or third child within this year, so which kind of closes us out of our space at Rubino's without space to grow. So we're very excited to, you know, be able to use the space at St. Josephat's if approved to have our business grow and expand and service other educators in the area and their children.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone that wishes to say something about the application, neither for nor against, but just wishes to address it? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing and move on to the next item on our agenda.
Next case is ZB 1404-2. Upon the matter of request by Costage Engineering Acting as Agent for CDE Partners LLC for an area variance to construct a freestanding canopy for the proposed Sonic Restaurant with less than required front setback and for consent to have outdoor seating for the restaurant on premises 999 East Ridge Road, the Depot Plaza, in an M manufacturing district.
My name is Alex Ammering with Costage Engineering located at 217 Lake Ave, Rochester, New York, 14608.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Before we get underway, we have been asked to agree that the planning board can serve as the lead agency with respect to this application. And I didn't feel that it was in my, within my purview as chair just to make that decision. I prefer to have the board make that determination. So I would move that we express a lack of opposition to the planning board acting as lead agency with respect to this application. Is there a second?
A little second.
Any discussion?
Yes. What does that mean exactly?
It means that they're going to do all the work that's required under Seeker, and we can just examine the, what they're presenting to us tonight, and we don't have to do the extra work.
Oh.
In a nutshell, I think that's what it boils down to.
But it doesn't have anything to do with automatically, let's say, giving up our paid opposition or anything like that?
No. It has nothing to do with any decisions that we would have to make. We're not yielding anything to them other than work.
Sounds good to me, yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The vote carries seven in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. Now you can, now we're here, ready to hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. With me tonight, Mike Montelto, also with Costage Engineering, and Fran DeSimone with CDE Partners, Sonic franchisee. Just before we get into the specific application, a little history on the project. Back in 2013, the plaza known as Depot Plaza was before the planning board and got approval for a 5,000-square-foot-out parcel. At the time, they didn't have a tenant for that parcel, and since that time, the owner of the plaza has worked with Fran and his team to bring Sonic before you guys. And last month, we were before the planning board and presented the same application. The original plaza is 15 acres that's zoned M manufacturing. The Sonic property itself is approximately eight tenths of an acre, located along the Ridge Road frontage. The Sonic itself is only approximately 2,500 square feet versus the original 5,000-square-foot-out parcel. They will employ approximately 12 people, open Monday through Thursday, and will provide indoor and outdoor seating for the clients there, so...
They're only open Monday to Thursday?
I apologize. Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Oh, okay.
And then the weekend, they have a little bit later hours.
All right.
To clarify that.
I thought it was such a strange that they wouldn't be open on the weekend.
Nope, nope.
I heard about it in the talk.
Doing a lot of business on the weekends, so... So more specifically, the application before you this evening is for a front setback on Ridge Road. Town code for manufacturing requires 50. We are proposing 28.4 feet. To clarify, it's not the main building structure itself, it's a canopy which Sonic uses for ordering. It's a unique feature to the Sonic brand. They actually have menu boards, and you pull your car up, it's a canopy, and you can order from your car, and the food will be delivered to your car. You can see it's the dotted, or I should say dashed, structure.
Point at it.
Yep.
Agree.
There's two canopies on the site. I'm Mike Montelto with Costage. We have two canopies. There's six covered canopy spaces on the north of the building and five south of the building. We broke them up so that we didn't block, you know, create a long frontage. Original planning was a canopy across the entire front. We thought that that might be a little bit much visually. Plus, we have a couple of unique project elements. This Sonic will have an indoor seating area, which a lot of the Sonics don't have, and it also has an outdoor seating area. So we wanted a nice view from Ridge Road down into the site. So we limited the canopy in the, at the north side to six spaces. And again, that setback request, there's approximately 28 feet where the code requires 50, the building's setback.
So the canopy is, the cars actually park underneath that canopy?
Yeah, I guess I can hand out, I got a couple copies of a typical... It would be the structure you see to the left.
See, that's it. It looks like the structure itself is 90, about 95 feet away?
Not the building itself. Yep. So if it weren't for these canopies, there would be no issue? Again, the structure, you know, in question is the canopy itself, not the building, and the rest of the bulk data is all map per the manufacturing district, so...
And the canopy, other than the supporting posts that hold it in up, there's nothing that's blocking the view from the road or...
That's correct.
...proaching on the view from the road. It's going to be sunk down, though, right?
There is some elevation change along that buffer on Ridge Road, so it won't, you know, actually even appear as tall from Ridge Road as it is in the parking.
How high will it appear from Ridge Road?
My best estimation, I believe it, we're working on detailed drawings now, but it's about 10 and a half feet tall, and I believe there's three or four feet of grade change, I want to say.
You're going to be able to see through it into the parking area, into the building?
Again, the only part you would see would be the reveal of the canopy itself.
Right, okay.
And the... Four to five feet of grade change just from Ridge Road, sideline elevation down into the site.
So it's not blocking any view really from Ridge, from people who are passing by?
It's an integral part of their business. It's not really a, you know, it's a signature portion of the business. You know, it's part of the whole Sonic experience. You come in, you've got an order board, you order from the car, they come out in the roller skates, all the rest of it, so, you know, it's...
I'd heard about the roller skate part.
It's a signature portion of the business, in terms of how the model operates.
Like the old A and Ws?
Yes. You've got a canopy ability, you've got a drive-through ability, you've got to lock in, and you've got to sit down. And it's all part of what, you know, from their model makes it work in this region.
And this will be the first Sonic in Monroe County, is that right?
Yeah. It'll be the first one in all of upstate New York, yeah.
That's terrific. We like to lead the way in Arundicoid. We have the first LA Fitness here, too.
Well, you go from Sonic to LA Fitness, is that the idea?
Well, you go to LA Fitness first, and then you go to Sonic. Work it off first. Pick up all those strawberry cheesecake shakes that they're advertising in this section. And then the other application front is consent for outdoor seating. I didn't know that we did consent for outdoor seating.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and actually, because this is in a manufacturing district, there's no consent that's required from the board here for any outdoor seating.
Oh, okay.
There's language if it's in the C business district that requires, that would require the zoning board's consent, but we are in the manufacturing district. I think the applicant just submitted that in the application, kind of in an abundance of caution, in case it were to apply.
That's correct.
But it does not apply here. And I can tell the rest of the board, you know, the planning board, when they held their public hearing last month, you know, looked at, you know, all of the site elements, including the canopies, and did not have any, you know, objection to the appearance or location of the canopy. Just submit that for the board to consider.
Okay. Any other questions or comments with respect to this application from the board? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes?
Hi, my name is George Hanischewski. I think you have my address already. I think it's a great idea, but I would suggest that the people who are building this take into consideration the wind tunnel effect on Ridge Road East. As the winds come in from the west, if they have those canopies and food being carried out, you may have an issue of it not making to the car from the main store. I mean, there is a high wind. We know that on Ridge Road, our sign is bent, and it's a steel post. So just take that into consideration.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone wish to speak to the application without taking a position either for or against? All right, seeing no one, we will close the hearing with respect to this matter, and we will take a four-minute break tonight. We will reconvene at 7:30. Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone wish to speak to the application without taking a position either for or against? All right, seeing no one, we will close the hearing with respect to this matter, and we will take a four-minute break tonight. We will reconvene at 7:30.